We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will stand. Madam Secretary, who take the role please?
Kevin Wysski.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Paulo Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Dany Stapleton.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, I'll open up a public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form. And any speakers have three minutes. Anyone for public comment? Okay, I have one public comment to read into the record that we received through the US mail. This is from Jerry Newcomer, University Place, Reno, Nevada. Dear all, I received an association flyer at my front door on 7/8/14. The alleged slanderous diatribe lacks many facts as to what the dump is and refers to the Gaslight people as, quote, "the dump people." This reference is unprofessional. The flyer omits what kind of dump it is, as there are many kinds, and the reference property is not on association land or under the control of the association. The owners of Gaslight are free to do what they want on their land, as long as it falls under a city's list of legal improvements in an industrial-owned piece of property. The association or a few misguided individuals seem to think they have control over Mr. Carson's property and what he may or may not do with it. Some have said that they just don't want his business up here. Is this a racist comment? It is not the association's business. Let those few who care sue Mr. Carson on their own dime and not put my home in peril, should Mr. Carson decide to sue the association for interfering with the use and commerce of his land. He clearly has damages just from the flyer alone. To refer to the Gaslight people in such an unfavorable light is childish. Be professional, if nothing else. This is a witch hunt. The pitiful lack of information on the flyer and from the association as to the cost benefit of this endeavor has never been provided. Why are we spending all this attorney money chasing windmills and ghosts? I believe the reckless action of a few homeowners and the board are trying to speak for the 460-plus homeowners when, in my opinion, 90% of them don't care or know what the rub is with Gaslight. You do not speak or represent me and my home. I am opposed to any action against Gaslight. I support Gaslight. If they violate their zoning status, that is a matter for the city, not the University Ridge Homeowners Association. The association should immediately cease any action and involvement in the Gaslight and therefore not put our homes in peril without the membership approval to spend any legal expenses. Thank you for reading my letter. Please see that the board members get a copy of this and that it is read into the regular meeting for the record. For the record, that has been read into the record. I do have a quick public comment. This is my first meeting as Chair, and as I wasn't here last meeting, I just wanted to thank the outgoing Chair, Doug Kaufman, for his service over the last year. And he did a great job, so thanks very much. With that, I'll close public comment. Next item, approval of the minutes of July 9th regular meeting. This is for Action. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Reno, second.
Any discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote, as I was not here.
As well as Jason Woosley will be abstaining.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, City Council Liaison Reports.
I have nothing tonight for him.
Next item on the agenda, item six, Presentation on the Reno Sparks Indian Colony Planning Issues. Scott Nibasky.
Good evening. Scott Nibasky, for the record, I'm the Planning Director for the Reno Sparks Indian Colony and appreciate the invitation to speak on behalf of the colony on planning issues that we work with the City of Reno on. I'm just going to give a little bit of brief history and then orientation on a map of what properties we do have within the colony's jurisdiction, and then I would return it back to the Chair if you have any questions or want to discuss anything. The colony was first established back in 1917 when the federal government bought 20 acres located off of Mill and East Second Street. And colonies are somewhat unique to Nevada. There aren't any across the United States, only in Nevada. And they were primarily established for homeless or landless Indians that were migrating towards the more urbanizing centers at the turn of the century, 19th century, for employment opportunities. So, a lot of the colonies have a very limited land base, unlike reservations where there's a land base for not only residential, but also maybe agricultural or farming or industry or business or things like that. Colonies were strictly residential, and so that posed a real challenge for the colony over the years as federal policies changed from the federal government having a much more of a paternalistic responsibilities for the tribes for when they migrated more towards self-determination and sovereignty. A lot of the colonies resulted in a land base that didn't really allow them to operate like most smaller governments, you know, where there's a tax base to pay for services such as police or fire or planning, environmental and things like that. So, the colony was put in a predicament where, very limited land base. We started off with the 20 acres down at the... Can I utilize this? We started off with 20 acres in 1917, and then we also acquired another eight acres on the north side of East Second Street, and that's where the first smoke shop was established. And that's right there by the intersection of...yeah, here it is. So, this is what we're speaking of right here is the Reno properties right there, and that's the original land base. Let me just move this up a little bit. That is...so, just for orientation, that's 395 or I-580, and then there's I-80 going across. We have a property out in Verdai where the Taco Bell is and the smoke shop on South Virginia. We have approximately 22 acres, bless you. And that's where Infinity, Acura, Mercedes, and the newest business we have established there is the new CarMax that's just going to be opening in the next two or three months. And then we have a property out in Sparks, one acre, that's off of Green Bay. And then out in Spanish Springs, that's another 24-acre site that's undeveloped, but that's where Moana Nursery is located. And then our second residential...oh, sorry. Our second residential community is up there in Hungry Valley, and that's in Washto County. So, since about 1926 where we acquired that second property that made up the original 28 acres, since that time, starting in the 80s, the colony started to acquire additional properties, again, to establish a kind of an economic base that would allow them to pay for services that the government, the US federal government, was starting to back away from and to make them a full-fledged, self-determined government. And so, we've acquired these properties, but not necessarily without the concurrence of the City of Reno or the local governments, because every time we purchase a piece of property and put that property into trust, it goes through a very rigorous process. Not only do the local governments, but the state governments have an opportunity to comment on it and either present any objections or any concerns or issues, but we also have to go through the NEPA, the federal environmental process, where we have to go through either an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement in order for these to go into trust. So, it's a very rigorous process, and it takes usually several years for us to go through. The other thing that we've done over the years is we don't necessarily buy property and then put in a contrary or conflicting land use. Oftentimes, what are the properties that we purchase and put into trust are properties that have the specific land use designation or the zoning, whether it's commercial or public. The only ones that I can think of where we've changed the zoning, and that was through the City of Reno, is this is our downtown colony. Again, this is the original 20 acres here. Since that time, we've purchased a three-acre site over here, and that's where our new health center is. I say new, it's about 2006 when that was opened up, 2007. That services all urban Indians in the Truckee Meadows area. We have approximately 18,000 visits, and they provide a full range of outpatient services for all the Native Americans in this area. This parcel here is a 20-something acre parcel, and that's where the Walmart is located. That was another example of local collaboration with local governments in where we built the first flood control project in the Truckee Meadows. And that's the flood wall and levee system that not only protects the colony's Walmart site, but also it protects the State of Nevada's restitution center site. We also have parcels along Mill Street and then internal parcels that we've been acquiring over time for various reasons. One, we're expanding our services and the need for land and buildings, but also, all of this land, when it was originally acquired, it was agricultural. Over time, since the 20s, you may be familiar with it, but a lot of this is industrial, and a lot of it is not really compatible uses with the Native Americans that live on that property. There's, you know, right across the street from the childcare center is, you know, industrial and auto body shops, and there used to be a morgue right there, and there's all sorts of stuff going on there. So, the other reason why we acquire land around the residential area is to change its land use to something a little bit more compatible and to make it more of a community. So, with that, you know, the acquisition of property and for the residential and housing over the years, we've worked very closely, not only with your staff, but also with Truckee Meadows Water Authority. We've worked with City of Sparks, Washto County. We work very closely. All of our commercial development and internal development has the same exact building codes that the City of Reno. That's primarily because we hire local architects and local contractors to do the work, and we want them to be familiar and have it to be somewhat of a seamless process so that there aren't any, you know, unique challenges to developing on the colony. One of the more unique projects that we're working on right now is on the corner of East Second Street in Kitsky, and that is an outcome of AB 299 at the state legislature that the city supported, and that's a land swap between the State of Nevada and the colony in a tax-revenue-sharing agreement that allows the colony to swap lands for this parcel, for the parcel that's directly adjacent to the Walmart site where the existing restitution center is. And part of that swap is, we're going to build a new facility for the State of Nevada restitution center, same amount of individuals that would be housed there, but of course, there'd be more enhanced features, classrooms, things of that nature, for those individuals that are transitioning out of prison and back in to society. And so, and we work closely with your staff on that. With that, future planning issues, we would look forward to working with the City of Reno on issues related to...this is your map that shows the one redevelopment area for the hospital, and then you have another redevelopment area for the Grand Sierra, you know, and that space in between is where the colony is located. We'd look forward to working with you on filling up that gap and maybe, you know, pursuing land uses over time that are more compatible with the tribal community there. Also, all the way along the south side of the river, along the Walmart site along here, we put in a path as part of the flood control, but it actually dead-ends at the freeway and it dead-ends at East Second. We'd like to continue that all the way along over to our health center and work with the local governments on developing that to enhance the south side of the river. And then lastly, we're looking forward to developing a cultural center that would celebrate the Great Basin tribes, you know, Washto, Shoshone and Paiute, and be a kind of a gateway cultural center for the rest of the State of Nevada, you know, in enjoying the cultural tourism that the state is promoting and celebrating now. So, with that, I would turn it back over to the Chair and if you have any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nesmet, for your presentation. Do we have any questions from the Commission? Anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, thank you so much.
Easy, thank you. If you have any other questions, you know, we work closely with Claudia or Fred, and we'd be happy to come back on anything else. Thanks for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings, item seven. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment, when a public hearing is heard, will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the Secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. First public hearing on the agenda tonight is LDC 14-00043, Charlin's Avenue Zone Change. Mr. Gilbert, thank you.
Good evening, for the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff has received a request to amend for a zoning map amendment from Neighborhood Commercial to multifamily 14 units per acre. Site's located at the terminus of Charlin's Avenue on a 12.3-acre site. For those in the audience that might not be aware, a zoning map amendment requires a recommendation of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will review the request based on adopted findings, make a recommendation to the City Council, who would ultimately decide about the appropriateness of the zoning map amendment. We have Derek Wilson, the applicant's representative, available to discuss the project further.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi, thank you. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of the applicant. As Nathan said, we're requesting a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial to MF14. The ultimate goal is to build a skilled nursing facility. This would...it's essentially a residential-type function, although in the city zoning code, it's not a residential use, I believe. But it's basically an apartment building that provides medical care. The site was formerly MF14, so we're just returning the zoning back to that old designation. I understand several years ago, when it received the NC zoning, that was somewhat controversial. Some of the adjoining residential properties did not want to see that commercial zoning. So, based on what seems to be a lack of concern with this change back, it seems like we're returning it to the condition that the neighborhood would prefer. I'm basing that on the lack of calls and uproar that we're seeing over this proposed change. The commercial change did generate quite a bit of output from the neighborhood, and I've received none. So, it seems to be a change that the neighborhood dared to see happen. I would definitely agree with that. If I lived there, I think that a low-rise skilled nursing facility would provide a very sound and compatible transition between the freeway and the existing residential. So, I think it's a benefit to the neighborhood, and Charlin's Avenue can easily handle the project. There's essentially zero traffic at the end of that street right now. I think that's really it for my overview. I'd be happy to answer questions if needed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Staff, do you have any...Mr. Gilbert, do you have anything to add? And I just want to interject real quick, because we did this a little differently tonight, and I should have introduced this to the other commissioners before we did it, but we had staff introduce the item and just for the benefit of the public as well as the Commission, just sort of just give a brief summary of what exactly it is that we're hearing so that everybody's clear and we know what we're voting on, and then have the presentation by the applicant and then any follow-up by staff. So, the same way we've been doing it, with just a brief introduction. Thanks, Nate.
Yeah, sure. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. The only thing I would add, although Mr. Wilson was discussing skilled nursing facility, that use would require a special use permit, and a use at that location on a residential would require a special use permit, so it's not carte blanche. We can make the findings and suggest a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, and we're going to open it up to public comment on this item at this time. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, please come up to the microphone and do so now. I guess there's none, so we'll bring it back to the Commission for any disclosures. We'll start at this end with Commissioner Kaufman.
I visited the site.
I visited the site, Commissioner Reno.
Commissioner Levis, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Wysski, yes, did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I did too.
Commissioner Woosley, yes, did I.
Commissioner Stapleton, I did as well.
So, we'll begin the discussion on this item with the Commission, with any questions for the applicant or staff. Discussion, comment? You have...
A quick question?
Yep.
Commissioner Reno? Nathan, maybe you can answer this. By changing the zoning, they have rights then to build what they want. I know they have an intent to build a care facility, but they could build an apartment complex or housing units, right? At least the housing units are by right, they can just go in there and subdivide, correct? Without any review or special use permit?
Nathan Gilbert, subdivision of land over four parcels requires a tenant map. So, even if it were single-family homes, five or more, your Planning Commission would be making that decision. And as far as multifamily housing goes, it would either require a site plan review or a special use permit.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Do we have any discussion? I do have something unless anybody else has anything. I did have one thing for the other commissioners, just to put out there as I was reviewing this. I noticed that we did receive a comment from the school district, and this is something that I think we only saw for the first time month before last, when we were hearing the West Meadows project, and something that seems to be kind of new, and that they're giving us a comment that the schools are at capacity and that for this project, 13, it's projected that if built, it would produce 13 additional high school students, and yet McQueen is at 123% capacity with trailers in the parking lot, as we know. So, this is an issue. This is the first time we've gotten this, and we got this letter like this, and we got this with comments on almost every one of the public hearings for tonight. So, I'm not sure if this is an issue. I know one of our findings are that public facilities have to be accounted for, so that's a comment for discussion if anyone else has any. If not, I guess, is there someone from the school district here? Could you shed a little more light on this for us? I mean, I think the first time that we had a...
Certainly.
We had, I think you were here at our last meeting, I wasn't here, but...
I was, yes, for the West Meadows Estates. For the record, my name is Mike Boster with the Washto County School District. This letter you're seeing here for all three of the residential proposals, it's going to end up looking like a form letter from us after a while, because what we're trying to do is the school district is trying to get out the message that regardless of the number of units that are proposed by any of these new residential subdivisions or zone changes especially, we'd like to get ahead of those. We just want to let the Commission know and the public know that we do, in certain spaces, you mentioned McQueen. McQueen is the one on this one that is already over capacity. And as we see additional students, whether it's one or it's 400, we're just adding to that overcrowding situation. I understand that this will be a, and I think it was put as a skilled nursing, or at least the proposal is for a skilled nursing, nonetheless, the zoning would allow, as Mr. Gilbert was mentioning, a multifamily project. We just want, again, to repeat, we want to let the Commission know that we do not have the capacity at certain schools, McQueen being one of them. Other schools mentioned here for this one are Billingshurst and Winnemucca, and they're approaching capacity. So, we're here to present that information to you. Next month, our Board of Trustees is scheduled to hear a presentation on residential growth from my department, which is Capital Projects. Pete Hr is our COO. We'll be presenting that to our Board of Trustees, and hopefully, when we come here for these smaller and larger projects, we can provide you with more than just, well, it will create X number of students and we don't have capacity. We currently don't have capacity, and it will create X number of students, and we don't have the financial resources to build new schools. That's the message that we'll probably repeat quite a number of times. So, that's the reason I'm here, and that's the reason you'll see three of those letters tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boster. I did not realize that he was going to be here, and I brought that up because the last meeting I was at, we had a discussion about this, and it was a pretty heated one, and so I wanted to be consistent. And so, I guess, I don't know if there's any other discussion or we want to...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wysski. I would just like to say that in this case, we have a property that was originally zoned MF14 going back to MF14. The school district, in my opinion, should have been able to plan for a given number of students for this property based upon what the original zoning was, which was MF14. And although other things may have changed in the area that have changed the number of students or whatever has changed within the school district, I can make the findings that the infrastructure is there only because an adjacent school, in the case of McQueen, Reno High School, has some available capacity. And maybe the school district has to take a look at where they're drawing kids from and move some kids around to fill the schools adequately. But in this case, this is a neighborhood that is in the McQueen area, it's always been zoned MF14, and so I think the school district should have had this in their original plans. And I don't know that that's enough to stop me from not making the finding and not approving this project.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Kaufman. I have to agree with Commissioner Wysski. Same thing. Some of the areas that aren't developed yet, that are, you know, MF6, whatever, if it's residential, the school district has to take a look at that, and I think one of the things is, there's always going to be some type of change to those school boundaries that have to be looked at, and it doesn't stop me from making the findings either. I can make those findings 100%.
Anybody else? Can I make a follow-up question for Mr. Boster? Do you...is that an option, to bus?
I'm Mike Boster with Washto County School District. Certainly it is, however, what that does, speaking of, if we have an overcrowding condition at McQueen, you take a portion of Reno High School, that is, that has capacity. Our question would be, what happens when properties that are zoned for Reno High School begin to develop in MF14 or any of the residential categories? When those develop, those students, I don't want to say entitled, are entitled, but nonetheless, if they're in the Reno High School zone, they should be going to that school, not someone from out of that district. Certainly rezoning can be done. It's costly, it's contentious, but it is an option, and it may be one of those things we have to do down the road.
Thank you. Well, I'll just add a comment before we take a motion, in case anybody else, unless anybody else has one.
A question, please? I'm sorry, I didn't catch you before you sat down. Thank you. At what point does it trigger, you know, looking into building another school? Is it more about households and tax base versus overcrowding?
Well, let me say this. At this point, and again, I'm repeating myself, the district does not have a funding source to build any new schools. As far as the trigger goes to build a new elementary, middle or high school, we have to look at it region-wide. If an area, for instance, the Northwest, the greatest areas of growth we're seeing in Washto County Reno Sparks are the Northwest, Southeast Reno, Double Diamond, DeMonte, and then Spanish Springs. When we start to see all of the schools in a given feed... When we start to see all of the schools in a given feeder system, meaning an elementary, middle, and high school feeder system, and there are multiple elementaries, a couple middles, and usually one high school, if those begin to go over capacity, I don't know if there's a trigger point as far as percentage-wise goes, we've been handling that by mobile classrooms in the last few years. You probably saw on the news recently, we're putting in a number of mobile classrooms at a number of schools. But at some point, you get to a situation where you have a school, such as McQueen, that's designed for 1,500 and some odd kids, that has 1,800 kids at it, using the cafeteria, the multipurpose room, the computer labs, the common areas, that sort of thing, and at that point, the district has to consider building a new school. However, we can't even get to that point if there are no funds to do so. So there is a trigger point, it's a cumulative thing, I couldn't really, maybe, it's probably some kind of a formula that we have, but it's a cumulative thing from all those feeder schools.
Does Washoe County schools work with the planning department to figure out where growth is going to happen and potentially schools replaced?
Absolutely. We work very well with the City of Reno planning staff, Cities of Sparks, and Washoe County as well. We do, we and regional planning on top of that. So yes, we do, we stay on top of things as best as possible to at least ensure there are school sites available. However, and this leads me into one more thing, though, in Nevada state law, if the school district determines there is a need for a school, NRS 278, what we can do is, at the tentative map stage, request a set aside. Say we've gotten to the point where there's a middle school needed in this area, or a high school needed on top of McQueen, or near in the McQueen area. What we have to do is request a set aside from the developer, pay for two appraisals, and then buy that property at market value. The district, there are no requirements for developers to donate, dedicate, give, help out with the district at all for property. Not to say there haven't been some, but that's how it works. We have to request one, the district requests a site, and then we go through that process. If that makes sense, I'm probably giving you too much information, but that's some of our backstory right now, is that we've got some issues.
That was great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Reno? Mr. Boster. You know, I kind of, and I see that the last, I guess, the last item on here, we have all three of them in a letter form here, you address all three projects.
Correct.
And so I guess I could go to that, but it even says inside that letter that you have no legal authority to ask for anything, and that basically rezoning can be costly and contentious, which you've already said.
Correct.
I guess I have a problem, I mean, I appreciate the information here, but as a planning commission, I don't think we should even be considering this, because it's really the Washoe County school district's problem to sort out how they rezone. I mean, in this, we have, in one situation, HUG is below capacity, and so is Reno, and so now you have McQueen that's over. Well, it sounds like we need to adjust the boundaries, but that's not really our problem. We can't really consider that on our agenda items as a planning commission. I mean, other than having this information, but I believe as a planning commissioner, and I think the whole commission, we shouldn't even consider this, it's nice to know, but it doesn't, it shouldn't make any bearing on our decisions.
If I could jump in there really quick?
Yeah.
Remind you of the findings associated with the zone change? There is finding H that says to develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of transportation and public facilities. So that is actually a finding...
You consider public facilities as the school district's?
Okay.
Yeah, when I think of public facilities, yeah...
I just want to remind you of the findings, whether you feel it's appropriate to consider or not, you are required as a planning commissioner to consider the findings.
But I think part of my issue here is that it really, when we have other schools that are under capacity, it's the school district's opportunity and their responsibility to move boundaries, it really is. And so that's why I have an issue with it. Thanks.
Understood, and just to reiterate as well, our Board of Trustees, sorry, next month we'll convene and talk about this very subject, about how can we best address growth? Is it a district-wide rezoning? And that may happen. We do have limited capacity nonetheless, even at a district-wide level. So again, though, I agree with you, that there are other avenues, but we are approaching capacities, even if there are some schools that are lower, some are higher, you spread it all out evenly, and we're still in trouble. Good, thanks.
Any other comment or discussion? I will weigh in, because I'm the one that started this discussion, and now that we're into it, I think perhaps I didn't realize what I was doing. This letter was, and obviously Mr. Boster had planned to be here, probably in hopes that this would happen, this letter addresses three out of four of our, or four out of four of our projects on the agenda tonight, and it really puts us in a sort of a challenging situation. We do have this finding that says, yeah, finding H, that we have to show that there are the public facilities and services available to serve this project, or in this case, to serve this zoning change. And, you know, part of the reason that I brought this up is because we really took to task the developers of the West Meadows project, who I see in the audience, and I brought this up out of consistency and out of fairness, because this is something that we discussed two meetings ago, and it's our job to apply the same standards and to be consistent to all the business folks and developers that come to us. And so clearly, the school district is here because they don't have the funding from, because of that situation, and now they're at the planning commission with this, and we're probably the last body that can help them, and yet here we are, and so it's sort of a difficult position for us to be in, so thanks very much for that. But I don't know really what to do, because this, I don't see how we can make that finding. The public facilities are not there, and that's what they've said. A school is a public facility, it's pretty clear, and it's a standard that we've held other projects to, so thank you. So I guess I'll take a motion unless there's more discussion on this item.
I have a quick comment. So item H says to develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of transportation and public facilities and services, including public access and sidewalk for pedestrians and facilities and services for bicycles. I guess I wonder what the intent of the public facilities are there? Is it schools that they were talking about? Is there a definition for public facilities? Are we talking about parks, you know, greenways, bicycle routes, bus terminals? I mean, what exactly, under this finding, is public facilities considered schools? I mean...
I would say that would be up for you to be able to make that finding for yourself. So public facilities and services, whatever, you believe that that, what the intent is for that point.
Is there a definition for public facilities? Do you know?
Pretty sure that's identified either in the master plan, or can we ask legal if there's a definition?
For the record, John Shipman. Normally, I would pull it up on my computer, but because the entire council chamber is torn up for the new upgrade, I don't have access to that currently. So I think the best bet is, Claudia has the code, I believe?
There's no definition.
There's no definition of the use of public facilities, just the zoning.
Okay, because I wonder if it's public facilities, meaning public amenities, facilities that are around the proposed development, and not necessarily the school district, or schools, as a public facility item?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wyskey. I read the first five or six words in paragraph H, "to develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement." It doesn't mean it has to be in place today or yesterday, it just means it has to be developed in a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement for those items. If this map is approved tonight, or recommended for approval tonight, council approves it, and it's not started for another 18 months, the school district has time to start planning and developing for the future needs of this community that are being developed, or have been developed, or being proposed to be developed as far out as 2030, 2040. So because of the development in a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement, I can make finding H, and that's my personal opinion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Taylor for the record.
I'm not sure who should answer this, but these numbers that the school district provided were 172 multifamily units. Does that include a medical facility? Because in my mind, it seems like that type of facility would reduce the number of children or school...
Glad you asked. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Zoning establishes a broad array of uses within a certain type. It doesn't, in this instance in particular, and while we could make the finding, it doesn't entitle multifamily development that would create that impact. Five or more multifamily residential units is going to require more discretionary review, where we could actually look at a project and look at the school district and other public agencies' concerns about that particular project. So to reiterate, yeah, no, in this particular instance, the MF-14 zone could, at least in the district's perspective, create that number of school impacts, but it's not necessarily the case. And if that were, if that's type of development, whether it be a tentative subdivision map or multifamily housing, is going to have discretionary review beyond this. So the zoning establishes a broader array of uses, it doesn't entitle them.
Commissioner Wisley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question, is this, to piggyback on this, is this how staff made findings?
Correct. In this instance, we were able to make the finding because the impacts that would create school-aged children would require further discretionary review.
That makes sense, thank you very much.
So I have a follow-up question, Nate. So, and I really appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate the questions from Commissioner Wisley. And also, Commissioner Wyskey, I appreciated his analysis, and it made me think, this is not a, that it is an issue of timing, and, you know, clearly, we need schools if there are going to be units built, but this is just the zoning, it's not the entitlement to actually build multifamily, unless it is. So the question is, for residential units to be built, is there one more step? Is there an SUP? You know, I know we can't amend a zoning map amendment to say, well, you know, we can only approve this if, you know, by the time they break down, you know, the space spots in the school are there, but would this require an SUP to develop the multifamily?
In this instance, it would. There may be other instances where it would not. For example, if it was, if you're expanding the mixed-use district, there's no discretionary review for high-density housing. So that might be an opportunity to look at the zoning map amendment, saying, okay, well, if we're assigning this here, there's no further checks and balances, it's just straight-to-building permit, and at that time, what impacts might this have on facilities that may include schools?
But in this instance, to build the multifamily, an SUP is required?
Correct.
And at that point, a similar finding? I do read a public facility to include school, I think that's been the general understanding. And is there a similar finding for an SUP? Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Case of LDC 14-00043, Shredon's Avenue Zone Change. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make every one of the findings.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wyskey, I can make a second, and I also can make all of the findings.
Hey, do we have any discussion before I take a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, that's, how many are we, seven? Zero. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you to the applicant, good luck. Next item on the agenda is public hearing number two, LDC 14-00045, Gulling Road Zone Change. Mr. Gilbert, thank you.
Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff received a request to amend the zoning on a one-acre parcel, currently zoned large lot residential, one acre, LLR-1, roughly located on the corner of Gulling and Harding Road. Again, the planning commission is making a recommendation on the zoning map amendment for the council, who will ultimately make the decision. I believe the applicant's representative is here and available to discuss her request.
Okay, thank you. Can we hear from the applicant's representative if they'd like? Mr. Kimpotic? Thank you. Yes, we are loud tonight.
Very loud, yeah. Thank you, Nate. We're certainly in agreement with the staff report. I don't have any good presentation, one-acre lot.
State his name.
Very much consistent with what's going around in the neighborhood.
You speak in the mic, John?
Oh, okay, I was purposely avoiding it because it was so loud back there. And so I would just be here for any questions, and I would, I'd be absolutely pleased to be involved in this discussion of the school district capacity, the whole issue on that, because we have our own information on that as well. Good discussion you have on the last case, and certainly it applies, I would think. So with that, I'll just take any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimpotic. Mr. Gilbert, do you have anything to add to the applicant's presentation?
Gilbert, Associate Planner. No, we concur with that, it is consistent with the existing zoning and development pattern in the neighborhood. We can make all the findings and suggest a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment on this item. Is there any comment from the public? Anyone wish to speak? Okay, if not, questions from the commission for the applicant or for staff?
Do we have disclosures?
Disclosures, thank you, Commissioner Kaufman, disclosures?
I drove by the project.
I visited the site.
Commissioner Olivas, I've visited the site, too.
Commissioner Wyskey, I viewed the site.
Commissioner Taylor, I viewed the site.
Commissioner Wisley, I viewed the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, I did as well, thank you. Questions for the applicant or for staff? Discussion on this item? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Reno, in the case of LDC 1400045, Gulling Road Zone Change, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance, and I can make the findings.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second that, and I can also make the findings.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, LDC 14-00046, Pink Hill Property One Zone Change. I believe this is, oh, Mr. Gilbert, thank you.
Good evening, Nathan Gilbert, for the record. Staff is the applicant on this request, as this was initiated by the City Council at their march...
If I can clarify, the City of Reno is the applicant. The City of Reno is the applicant, not staff.
Thank you. Staff is presenting this on behalf of the City of Reno, thank you for that clarification. So the request from council was to initiate a zone change from the multifamily, 30 units and acre, West University Neighborhood Plan overlay zone, to the mixed-use University of Nevada Regional Center Plan District. Site's located on the corner of 14th Street and Virginia, and it's about a third of an acre. This is a land use map of the University of Nevada Regional Center, and you can see this cross-hatched area the subject parcel is located in, is identified as a transitional area. What that means is, when the state acquires it, a piece of land, and here it automatically transitions to the mixed-use UNRC zone, and an applicant can request, as an individual, that the mixed-use UNRC zone be applied. It is consistent with the master plan designation. Site's currently located in the West University Neighborhood Plans sub-district, it's called the University Regional Center and Transit Corridor, which has... It's called the University Regional Center and Transit Corridor, which has expanded density and expanded land uses for the MF-30 zone. So while you may be familiar with the standard MF-30 uses, this actually doesn't restrict density as it stands now. So the primary difference in the request would be the urban form. So you would have the mixed-use or regional center urban design standards. And I think the primary difference also would be with, the mixed-use district allows for up to a 50% parking reduction with an approved parking plan, traffic study. The mixed-use UNRC land uses are tailored to be consistent and compatible with those customarily found adjacent and near a university campus, and staff can make the applicable findings, suggest a recommendation of approval to the council.
Thank you. That was a detailed introduction. We appreciate it. Oh, you're the applicant. I get it, sorry. Got it. I'm following. So I guess there's no presentation from the applicant now. Can we have public comment on this item? Any members of the public who wish to make a comment? Yes, please come up to the... Oh. Thank you. And you have three minutes to speak, and when you're done speaking, can you please fill out a request to speak form?
I did.
You did. Are you?
I'm Jan.
Jan, hi, Jan. Thank you.
Anyway, I have property in that area, and it's a very dense area. The university got to a point where in a critical time of parking, they cannot add any of the parking structures they have because the way they're built, they don't have any property, they don't have any money or location for it. And this change in mixed use is going to, the way I understand it, if I'm wrong, will you please correct me? But if this changed to the MF-30 university part, it turns into a deal where someone can put in, these people could possibly put in on a half an acre, nine units. Each unit would have five bedrooms, that'd be 45 people. There could be two people in part of the apartment, say a fourth, so you could wind up with maybe 60 people. And in my apartments, I have 24 right next door, up on 14th, 14th Street, directly across the street from the Wayland parking garage. And they, I have probably about 35 tenants, and they all have cars. I'd say 95% have cars. And it's not something new, it's something that's been going on for years. All the kids want cars. And I have parking for every bedroom I have. And all the people that live there, they're not all kids, a lot of the, they're teachers and professors, and they will, they'll have their own automobiles. So what I'm trying to say is it's going to really cause havoc in the neighborhood. They, these people that live in my place will, they'll go to the city and get the parking permits, and they'll use that for their friends to park, visitors. So anyway, it's, I hate to be against something, a growing thing, because that 1,300 block is really blighted the way it is now. It can use something new, but as far as extending the parking use to that, great, if not a car parking, it's kind of ridiculous. Right now, there's no place for anyone to park, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Heather DeAngeli?
Landlord in the area for the past 18 years, right across the street from UNR. And even though we're right across the street, all of my tenants have always had cars. So I've seen the pressure put on the area, and to reduce the required number of parking spaces would just put a bigger squeeze on my tenants and on myself. I'm a parishioner at Our Lady of Wisdom, and as you know, the university just built, well, they took away our parking, more of our parking on Sundays. They built another dorm. And all these kids are moving into the dorm, too, and they bring cars, and the university isn't supplying the parking. So it's going to fall onto the landowners, landlords, to provide at least a reasonable amount of parking for our tenants and for the neighborhood as a whole. I just, you know, like I said, I'm for development, too, but to reduce the required number of parking spaces, it just will not improve the quality of life up there at all. It would make it really difficult. And I'm up there all the time. I'm up there every Sunday. I'm up there during the week, doing yard work. So I've really seen the change and the need to keep, you know, the required parking spaces and not reduce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, but before that, any disclosures? Commissioner Kaufman?
Commissioner Kaufman, I drove by the site.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
Commissioner Wyskey, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site, and my company, Atkins, did a corridor study through here, but we're no longer doing any work for RTC on this.
Commissioner Wisley, I visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, as did I. Hey, are there any questions from commissioners for staff on this item?
Commissioner Kaufman, Nathan. So tell us about the parking, which...
The subject site is identified in a transit corridor, or a regional center. It's also along a transit corridor. And in the existing West University Neighborhood Plan, it's identified as a transit corridor as well. Not as we know them, it's sort of a modified version, but meant to facilitate transit. The policies of the master plan that apply to this want dense, urban, walkable, pedestrian-oriented types of development. That's the intent, and if it's less convenient to park than in a traditional neighborhood, that's part of the policy direction that was adopted here. As far as parking concerns, now, the mixed-use doesn't entitle that to happen. It allows us to evaluate an approved parking study. So we would, if they request whatever the reduction would be, up to 50%, that would be up to staff's discretion on overall impacts and appropriateness.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, quick question, Nathan. Commissioner Reno, I'm a little confused. The city is the applicant, do they own the property? Is that the deal?
The city does not own the property.
So why didn't they ask for all of the zoning along the Virginia Street to be changed?
I can jump in there. The property owner did approach City Council and request the zone change. City Council issued the zone change to these properties. We recommended they look at the entire area, and at this time, they just felt with resources available that we would just go with these properties.
But eventually, I mean, the goal is to have all these switched to mixed use.
Yes, all properties, the ones along Virginia.
Right, that's in the neighborhood plan.
The intent with these transitional areas was to sort of phase them out, not to have it happen all at once, but to come in project by project.
Project by project, okay. And with mixed use, you can have commercial and residential, correct? And I think that's, I mean, that's the intent, and that's the direction that the neighborhood plan wants to go in, along Virginia Street, to have mixed, well, to have commercial, too.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Other questions for staff?
No, I have another question, Nathan. And there's no project for this. This is just a straight zoning change. Is that correct?
Nathan Gilbert, yes, this is a straight zone change, but again, with, this is an example of the mixed-use zoning, where development goes straight to building permit. There's nothing here, no development here that would require any further discretionary review. So the zoning, the zoning that's allowed, the types of uses in the zoning that are allowed, so long as they build to the standards of code, can go straight to building permit. So any future project would not come back to the commission.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm, sorry, I have a question for Nathan. Nathan, is parking then become, in the mixed use, it becomes a different calculation depending upon what the use is? Is that correct? I mean, if they decide to do commercial for 50% of the allowed build-out area, that would have a different parking calculation than, say, 100% residential? Is that correct?
Nathan Gilbert, that's correct. Mixed-use supplies the same parking standards as everywhere else in the city. The distinction is that there's an ability to get up to a 50% reduction. Wired off-street parking.
Okay, so the maximum they can get is 50% reduction, and then the balance would be off-street parking. This area around the university is permitted parking. Is it already spoken for, or how is that monitored?
That would be subject to evaluation at that time of the traffic study.
By staff?
Staff.
At staff level?
Yeah. And an administrator's decision can be appealed.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Discussion? Motion? Discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. In the case of LDC-14-00046, Pink Hill Property One Zone Change. Based on the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. I can make all the findings.
There a second?
Commissioner Taylor, I second, I can make all the findings.
Is there any discussion before we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, seven to zero. Thank you, Nate. Next item on the agenda, LDC-14-00044, Mountain View Estates, Unit 1B. Vern, thank you.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for a tentative map to develop a 61-unit, single-family residential subdivision and a special use permit to allow small lot development. The purpose of a tentative map is, it's reviewed by the Planning Commission and various agencies to determine the appropriateness of the tentative map, and that is a public process involved with mapping and creating lots. If the tentative map is approved, then through an administrative process, the final map is reviewed to be in conformance with the tentative map and all the conditions, and that's what creates the lots for people to buy and sell. The special use permit in this case is for small lot development. The property is zoned SF-4, single-family residential 4,000, small lot development allows you, through the special use permit process, to reduce the lot size down to 2,400 square feet. In this case, some of the lots are, the smallest lots are 3,200 square feet. Small lot development also allows the lot width to be reduced, whether it's a corner or an interior lot, to 30 feet. And in this case, they're just requesting to reduce the lot width of the corner lots, all the interior lots will be 40 feet. The interior lots will be 40 feet, and the corner lots will be less than 50. The site contains 14.63 acres and is located at the south terminus of Remington Park Drive and southwest of Gardella, of the Gardella Avenue Coastal Street intersection, and again, in the SF-4, single-family residential 4,000 square foot zoning category. Staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation from the applicant. Mr. Kimpotic?
Good evening, Commission. John Kimpotic. Once again, I'm in, as is my client, complete agreement with the staff report and the conditions it's proposed. It's a reduction in density from what occurred, actually by about 40% is what's noted in the staff report back from the original approval in 2007. So that's all we have. We do have our civil engineer who, here, for any real technical questions. Jason Gillis is the...
Vern, do you have anything to add to the applicant's presentation on this item?
No, I do not. I believe the conditions of approval and the staff recommendation was for approval address the appropriate issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comment on this item? Anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Please speak now. Okay. Disclosures from the commissioners before we ask questions and have discussion?
Commissioner Kaufman, I went by the project.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site.
Commissioner Olivas, so did I.
Commissioner Wyskey, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I did, too.
Commissioner Wisley, as did I.
I did as well. Questions from the commission for the applicant or for staff on this item?
Commissioner Reno, quick question. Vern? As I was reading through the packet, I was a little confused. It says, I don't know, on page four of the staff report, top line, it says, "This request to reduce the number of lots in this portion of the site from 103 to 61." I just don't quite understand how that came about. What is, where's that 103? And I know it's to 61 now, but...
The 103 was from the previous approval. That whole paragraph is discussing what was approved there and how this area compares with the previous approval. So on the...
The previous, do we have a map of the previous approval?
No, we don't, but this is the, this is the proposed map, and the lots extended down to this area in here.
Okay. That's why, that's why my question, it comes down to the 4,000 square foot lot, because I assume previously they had 4,000 square foot lots, correct?
They had, they had a special use permit for small lot development with the previous approval also. Basically, in '05, they mapped the north, or they got a tentative map approved on most of the site, or on this site, and then they did final maps on the northerly portion. And then in '09, they came in and redid the project with small lot, but it didn't really affect the northerly portion because those lots were already created. So there were more lots in the area that they re-tentative mapped.
Okay.
Which they are subsequently re-tentative mapping again.
Okay, I guess I must have missed that prior, they had a special use permit for small lots. Right, maybe I just missed that somehow.
Yes, it's, it's a few lines up, but again, when you're going through sort of complicated history, it's not always easy to explain it. I know what it says, but sometimes other people don't, so.
Okay, and what size were those lots when they got reduced to small lots? Were they averaging 3,800?
They were, I have the file upstairs, but they were a lot narrower. They were, I believe they were in the 30-foot width range, and I know they were less than 4,000. I just don't know offhand what the lot range was, but they were smaller than these.
They were smaller than these?
Yes. That's how they got 30, 40 more lots in essentially the same area.
How did you get all those lots? So the development to the, to the north, or the first phase, it's all 4,000 square foot lots? There's nothing smaller than 4,000 square foot in there?
This is the area, see the platted lots north of my pencil?
Right.
That's the phase that got mapped, and all of those lots are 4,000 square feet or larger.
Or larger?
Yes.
Okay, that was one of my, one of my concerns, and we'll have more discussion about that, was about the size of the lots being reduced. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Kaufman? Vern, their SUP just ran out of time? That's why they're back for a new one?
No, they're, when you do a tentative map and a special use permit together, the tentative map prevails, so that the SUP is, for lack of a better term, tacked on to the approval. tacked on to the approval, and then the validity of the S U P goes with the tentative map. So, if they record their maps in accordance with state law, then the special use permit goes along with it. I put a condition in there just to make that clear, but that's the way it works.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I'm actually gonna ask a follow-up question, just a follow-up to the small lot discussion. Vern, could you just tell us, sort of as a planning concept, what some of the rationales are behind, or maybe this is a question for the applicant? You know, from a planning or design perspective, what's the reason or the desire, the goal? Well, achieved with the smaller lot size?
In this particular case, I think it's topography, because the site steps from east to west, and to get usable areas without doing a whole lot of grading, they've kind of shortened up the lots or made them, made them smaller. And again, it fits in with, it's very similar, the lots that they're doing, they're not really utilizing the full extent of the small lot. I've seen subdivisions where the lots were 2,400, 2,800 square feet, and it's just a matter of design. Sometimes a small lot subdivision, they're in little pods around a central driveway where the lots, they just fit in like pieces in a puzzle. These are more standard-type lots, but they are, you know, some of them are smaller, but the development pattern and what they're proposing is very consistent with what was approved to the north with the original project. So, I mean, from our perspective, it's just a different housing type, and it just allows a little bit of flexibility in designing the site. So, from our perspective, it isn't a, you know, in this particular case, it's not that, you know, difficult or an odd design. I mean, the site was originally zoned MF14, and they, it got rezoned to four and then we're where we are at this point.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno?
I have another question, maybe for the design engineer, the civil engineer? You can answer this. It appears to me, as I was looking at this, that the roads got narrower. They got skinnier than the adjacent roads. Is that true? And then why is that? Maybe you can explain that.
For the record, Jason Gillis, tech engineering. See if I can get this to line up where you can see it. So, the portion of the wood that you're talking about is where the roads narrow here and here. The existing road patterns that we're finishing, marrying to, finalizing with this project, don't meet current city standards. They were designed and built previously to a width that doesn't match the standards now. So, we had a choice of continuing the roadways as they are, or narrowing them and eliminating on-street parking. With these smaller lots, we felt that was a more viable way to handle the congestion of those smaller roads and provide parking, which you see as a condition at the end of the roadway. This is a previous rendering that doesn't show the parking, but Vern had a map up here that actually showed the parking. So, that...
Well, yeah, that, I guess that was my concern. It looks like you eliminated on-street parking at least one side.
Both sides.
Well, yeah, both sides, but with the roads, had they matched the original subdivision to the north, I think there's parking on one side. Is that correct?
Correct. There's parking on one side, and the roadway is only four feet wider. So, those cars actually take up more of the roadway. This provides a cleaner look on the street and less congestion.
I kind of worry about this from an engineering point for, well, fire safety. I'll be honest, you look at a lot in the middle of that, do you think someone's not gonna pull up and park on a red zone and go inside? And, you know, that could happen. How's that enforced for law enforcement and, you know, for, for fire trucks? I just worry that, is somebody really gonna go park, you know, half a block away and walk back to their house?
Sure. And in that situation, it would be up to law enforcement and the HOA to enforce those rules. If there is a car parked in a red zone, there's still 14 feet of traveled way, including, you know, there's always the opportunity to go up into those driveways. If, fire trucks will make it around there. But that is something that the owners and the HOA will have to self-police.
Okay, thanks. It looks like Bill has a comment, and I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to address the standard. Bill Gall, Senior Civil Engineer, for the record. There used to be a 24-foot no-parking standard for residential development, 28-foot parking one side, and 34-foot minimum parking both sides. The 28-foot standard that we found that residents didn't adhere to typically, we'd have parking on one side, no parking on the opposite side. We found that residents didn't adhere to that parking on the one side with no parking on the other, and you would get parking on both sides. Fire found it very difficult to maneuver those roadways, and that's why we eliminated that standard. So, it would be much better to have the wider roads, allow the parking on both sides, or completely prohibit it on the road, on-road parking. It's much easier to police, and they get better compliance with that.
Okay. Do we have other subdivisions in town that are like this?
We have some subdivisions in town with a one-sided parking.
Or with no parking on either side?
We, numerous, as a matter of fact. It typically goes with either hillside development or the small lot development, where they have, in an area like this, where you have your driveways, you really don't have very much parking areas, even on-road, between your driveways with the narrow lots. Anyway, so very limited number of on-street parking, even if you had 34-foot width to get the on-street parking, so.
And there hasn't been any issues with the fire department in that?
No.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Madam Chair? Question for Mr. Krimpottic, and you may hand this one off to your civil engineer.
Of course.
Your driveways are for guest parking or are those for owner parking? Because you do show a garage on these units, or I believe what I saw is a garage on the elevation.
I think as a practical matter, it would be for both, right? Because you have four parking stalls as a minimum per unit. Two in the garage, they also have a minimum of two-car garage plus two full-length driveway spaces. Lot of people, especially in starter housing, don't have four cars. Some might. So, if you have one or two, then you'd have room for guest parking in addition to the parking field.
Okay, how deep are your, are your driveways?
20-foot plus, they're actually, they're 20-foot minimum, and then you'd have the sidewalk.
And what is the length of an automobile that's used for that calculation?
That's funny you say, good question, but I, once upon a time, I looked at a Yukon XL, you could Google this right now. You know how long that is? About just under 18 feet. That's a big car. So, 20 is an old standard, it's been around for the longest time, because parking geometry dominates design in this crazy planet, and it wastes an awful lot of space. And so, we're still using 20-foot and 19-foot in our stalls and parking lots. Commissioner...
Okay, so then, to get back to what my question and my direction is, is that 20 feet deep will allow a vehicle to park in the driveway and still allow pedestrian traffic to pass behind it on the sidewalks? And not hang out over them?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the school district.
I don't intend to go into the same depth that we did on the first one, because I believe we pretty much beat that horse. But, in this case, would you please explain to me Clayton? You've got Clayton down as being over-capacity, yet your elementary school and high school are under-capacity at this time, and that is through five years. Is that correct? Is that the way, am I reading that right?
The way I'm reading what I wrote here is Clayton and HUG are projected to be under-full capacity for the next five years.
Okay.
The issue we have is Peavine Elementary School, which is a K through 5. Currently, we're showing it 28 students over-capacity with no room on that particular site for mobile classrooms. So, this is a very different thing from the first issue, where we had a high school in an over-capacity situation. This is the elementary school. However, at the elementary level, there are team-teaching possibilities that can essentially not double a classroom's capacity, but I don't want to minimize the impact to this, to Peavine Elementary, but we're talking, I think it's, what did I say? 10 elementary school students? Again, not minimizing, just stating the facts, that we're 28 over at Peavine now, and we're anticipating another 10.
Okay, and none of these kids would be in the Sierra Vista area of elementary school?
Well, the data that I have, they're zoned for Peavine. Again, like we talked about rezoning before, though, that may be one of those things where that's the solution for this particular one. If Sierra Vista has, has room, we hate to get into spot zoning because it does do a domino-type of effect, and I won't keep on going about rezoning.
We get lectured on spot zoning occasionally from staff.
Right, and we have a different kind of spot zoning, whereas we take some kids and move them around, that sort of thing.
Probably not any different.
Probably a similar concept, yes.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. And what you, what you answered, and for the benefit of fellow commissioners, is you've told me that the school district has a plan and some options available for the additional potential 10 students at some point, and, and that's, that's a great answer. That's a fantastic answer in my book. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? I have one question, just to follow up on the question I asked staff for the applicant. For, yeah, the applicant's representative. The, Vern's answer to my question about the intent of bringing the lot size down, do you agree with his answer? Is that the reason? Was it, is it, is it a design question and a topography issue for you guys? Is that the goal? Are you, what's the problem you're solving? Or just the design, you know, that you're offering?
I think Vern, you know, different perspective, I think he nailed it, but part of it is, you know, the stuff that we don't talk about here, but what market you're trying to capture. And I think when you get into, this is only about, what is it? Seven or eight to the acre? Start getting into what we see around the country, 11, 12, single-family detached, 11, 12 to the acre, you're trying to deliver single-family detached housing. People, there's a giant, giant preference for single-family detached. Get people in starter homes that, in this, in this case, about $225,000, have a nice neighborhood, small yards, no doubt, but it's gotta be livable. Detached, I think that's the preference, and that's why they have market for it. And we have a code that allows for it, you know? We're actually close to 4,000 square feet. It's average lot size, only about 5% less than the 4,000. So, it's really a market thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, this, Commissioner Reno?
Yeah, actually, now that you mention it, John, you're up there. So, I understand that there is a demand for it, but, but why not have 4,000 square foot lots? Is there something that actually prohibits you from making 4,000 square foot lots on this?
It's the depth.
It's the depth that does it.
It's the depth, because then you do end up having, the product is narrow, right? And so, you still make the side yards work with the 40, which is way over what the code requires, it's 30, right? In small lot. So, all we're doing it is, as Vern said, is on the corners and on the depth. And it's just the way this, if you look at the way it lays out, if you added 10 feet, you wiped the whole thing out.
Okay, I guess that makes, okay, that's why, okay. I kind of understand that. Wasn't this graded before, kind of on a plan like this, though? I mean, you had a special use permit for grading cuts and fills of 10 feet, but wasn't this graded to kind of account for the lots that would have been there?
But it was similar depth, right? That's why we had small lot, as Vern mentioned, in the last...
Oh, okay. It was the same deal, okay.
Same depth, yeah.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any discussion on this before?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make two motions here.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman?
Case of LDC 14-00044, Mountain View Estates, Unit B. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map, subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieski, I can, I'll second that, and I can make all the findings.
Okay, thank you. Are those two motions then? Or did you just make the first motion?
That's one motion. I'll make the second motion after.
Thank you. Okay, before we call for a vote, I just, I have one comment to make before we vote. This, that I, when I was reviewing this, I, I thought about that finding, number four, about the availability of public services such as schools, and I was really happy to hear Mr. Boster say that there's a way to accommodate and make available that resource. So, with that, I can make the findings, and I'll be voting yes on this. So, any other comments? I'll call for a vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. Commissioner Kaufman?
In the case of LDC 14-00044, Mountain View Estates, Unit 1B. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieski, I'll second that, and I can make all the findings.
Okay, any discussion before we call for a vote? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you. We had a meeting earlier this, or late in July. We approved one project for the City of Sparks. We also had an election of officers. Commissioner Doug Voels from the City of Sparks was voted, nominated, and voted in as chairman, and I was nominated and voted in for the City of Reno as vice chair this year. There's your update.
Thank you, and congratulations on being nominated.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item number nine, discussion regarding the definition of a church in Title 18.
Okay, Chairman, you asked for this to come onto the agenda, and I have asked Vern Close to stay for this discussion as we intend to have him head up a update, an update to Title 18 over the next year or so, which we're just starting the process. So, the definition for church/house of worship is any building used for religious worship services, religious education, and fellowship activities and programs of a religious organization. The term does not include any class of childcare, childcare center, general education classrooms and facilities, or commercial activities. On the overhead, so you can...
Madam Chair?
Sure.
I have a question with that. Can it be used solely for one of those purposes and still be considered a church? If it's not used for worship, but is for educational?
Then it would fall under the education definition, whether it was a childcare or a school, or whatever it would be. It wouldn't, it wouldn't fall under house of worship.
It doesn't include that. If you write there, the term does not include a class of childcare, general education classrooms, facilities, so it's... Have a school with a church, but the school would have to have, meet whatever it needs to meet per the zoning code separately from the house of worship church.
Even if there were religious teachings? If it was all class-based, then, then it would still just classify as a school and not as a house of worship?
Well, if it's a school, we don't, we don't differentiate between religious school, or public school, or private school. It's a school. It's either an elementary school, a secondary school. So, that's, that's how it's classified. There are other definitions of schools also, like vocational, all those sorts of things.
Right, if you're thinking like a, like a Sunday school program, that would be part of a, of a religious program. It wouldn't be the education system as defined by the state of Nevada.
I'm just asking, because it seems like we've had some applicants, you know, in the past, past few years, that maybe it's leaning more towards a school, but they're still considering themselves as a church. And I guess if there is some kind of worship held, or, you know, then it would... And I guess if there's some kind of worship held, or, you know, then it would qualify as a church, but I just didn't know where that line was.
Commissioner Wusley, may I jump in? Commissioner Wiskey? Yeah, of course. Claudia, I'm thinking of one in particular. I'm not going to bring it up by name or project, but there is a group of parents who opened up their own school, similar to a charter school, rented or leased the classrooms of a church site, although they were not part of the church, they were a separate entity, they were a renter. So would, if they're not, if they're not involved in the educational process of the religion, and it's just a school, do we, do we look at that separately, then? Or is that something that would be looked at in this upcoming revision?
We look at them separately. So the church is a church, and a school is a school. So it's, whether the school is associated with the church, or it's a different organization providing that education system, they would have to meet the standards associated with the school.
Okay. Very good, thanks.
You're welcome.
That's a great clarification. Thank you.
I guess I'll jump in, because this was my request to have a discussion on this when we had the project out down south by Demone Ranch High School. And I think we've had a little bit of the discussion on this, and I guess, question for staff is, do you want us tonight to sort of chew this over? I think one of the questions was, I mean, my main concern was that churches over the years have changed, and they, churches now are much larger than they were, say, in the '60s, and so the impact, you know, physical size and impacts that go along with that are much different than when this first was probably put into the code. So I think one of my questions was, you know, in other cities, or, you know, other places across the country, have they, have they taken any measures to split out, you know, based on a square footage threshold, or other impacts? Of course, having to, nothing to do with the use, right? Because, because that doesn't matter, but just having to do with the physical impacts and size, it's much different than, well, we used to have churches in neighborhoods that were relatively small, and now to have a church in a neighborhood that's one of these mega churches. So I think that was the discussion and where we were going. So the question from staff is, and are you, are you guys, what do you, what would you like from us tonight?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, I'm just taking that question in the perspective of what we do with churches in Reno, and basically, whether it's a mega church, or a regular church, or a smaller church, we're looking at, okay, how many seats does it have? How much traffic does it generate? And then you look at that through the special use permit process, and it's done that way. So it's not like they could have 12,000 people there, but the capacity of the, you know, 12,000 parishioners, but they only have a capacity of 1,000 people can be there at any one time. And that's how you would review it, not that it's a big, I mean, you're looking at it based on the size of the church. So we wouldn't necessarily differentiate between a mega church and a small community church.
I think the question was, was it, is a church in allowed use by right in certain zoning districts?
In the residential districts, all residential districts, it's a special use permit.
And in other districts?
Commercial, it is in allowed use.
Okay.
And then each PUD would be separate.
And maybe in some mixed use zones.
Those are our only zoning districts? Mixed use?
Mixed use is going to vary, depending on...
Yeah, which one it is. So again, some of them are allowed by right, some of them are not allowed at all, and some of them would require a special use permit, just case by case, depending on the zoning classification.
Looking at the regional centers, it looks like most of the more commercial-focused ones, it's allowed outright. The convention regional center residential district requires a special use permit. So we pretty much mirrored what we have in residential and commercial districts, as far as our consideration for churches.
Is that mixed-use districts?
That was the regional centers.
Right, because regional centers are mixed use.
Correct.
And then is there, so it's allowed by right in regional centers?
Unless it's one of the more residential ones, then it's a special use permit.
Is there mixed use anywhere else outside of regional centers?
Transit corridors.
Okay, so is it allowed by right?
Yes, in all transit corridors.
Okay. I'm thinking of transit corridors that may be less dense and where mixed use is allowed. Is that, is that, I'm just thinking of the, you know, largest possible church, like some of the ones we have, sort of further out in town. Is that something we would want by right in all mixed-use districts? Is there some consideration if it's, you know, a certain distance from residential, or?
I think on a transit corridor, having a use that attracts a large density of people to one area on a transit corridor would be exactly what we would want.
However, a building that's very, very large, and it's massing in size in a transit corridor, doesn't necessarily create sort of walkable, you know, broken-up blocks?
If designed appropriately, it can. And we actually encourage the higher densities and intensities.
And again, there are, if it's through a special use permit, if that's required, if it's not, standards can be, I mean, we have a lot of standards for that sort of thing, like building orientation, sidewalks, landscaping, those sorts of things, in the transit corridors and regional centers, that would address that. When we are looking at the code, we could look at, do we need supplemental things for those particular uses? Because if you look at the uses on the use chart, there are additional use regulations in addition to standards. So if there's a particular use that, in general, would be okay, but in certain areas, or in, like, say, the residential portion of the CRC, and you wanted tougher standards, or more strict standards, to deal with residential adjacency, you could put those in as well. So there are a number of methods that we can, whether it's a church, or any type of use that's, you know, seen to be, that has, you know, potentially objectionable.
I guess the only thought I have is, a very, very large church being allowed as a, with an SUP in a residential area, so that maybe there could be over a certain size in a residential area, that that's, you know, something that if it was an...
But that's only going to happen if we approve the SUP.
Right, but, but churches...
So it doesn't go anywhere if we don't approve it, or if it gets appealed, then it goes to city council. So it's not a matter of what's written in Section 18, it's a matter of a specific project brought before us so that we can review it.
Right. I'm fine if everyone's comfortable with that. I was just thinking of the very large churches, and what's allowed by right, and, you know, or even with an SUP, you know, some, another use of that magnitude may not even be allowed with an SUP in residential districts, the way that churches traditionally have been allowed in residential districts. So I think that was the thought. I'm trying to reach back when we had this discussion on this item, but if I'm the, you know, if, if everyone else is comfortable with this, then, then I'm okay.
Madam Chair, I do remember being concerned that, I think we were looking at a rural area, and, you know, and at that time, we were looking at this church that could be considered a mega church going in, and would it fit the, the character of the neighborhood exactly? And, you know, is there anything stopping that from happening if they go in and they actually purchase the property, or their, a school has sold some area, and a church has gone in and purchased that property? So is there any kind of limitation on that? Because there seems to be no control on the size. I do think it's something that's, could be considered, but, I mean, I'm not sure, what can we do at that point?
Mr. Wiskey, at least in an SUP, we have an opportunity to put conditions on it, so that in the case that we were looking at, at, down at the south end of town, and should it happen in any new future development, where somebody purchases a couple of acres in the middle of a residential area and wants to put a community church in, we can condition it so that they can't have outside events, no loudspeakers, no music. We've even had that happen recently, as a year and a half, two years ago, maybe, right off of Robb Drive in an existing neighborhood. And they wanted to have outside events. We said okay for outside events, but no amplified music. We had them turn the amphitheater in a certain direction, so it faced away from the majority of the closest residents. So we can condition an SUP to control to the best of our ability, and plan for the future for a win-win situation for neighbors and, and the church.
If I could also jump in here really quick. The way we consider churches in the code right now, I would say, is similar to schools or any other institution like that, which would be consistent with the federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which requires that we do consider all of those land uses in the same way. We did recently have a state law passed that eases up on quite a bit of the regulations for schools, and I would say, making it stricter on churches when we just made it easier on schools. We would have to consider that to make sure we're not violating RLOPA, which is the federal law.
Madam Chair, I have another question. Just something that seems to be a pattern is a church buying up property around it. So at that time, the original footprint, you know, was fitting the neighborhood, and yes, is, depending on whether you're on the outskirts of town and there's growth, or you have an older community, you continue to buy up property around it, and then therefore, and then come in and ask for zone chains on what's happening around it, going from residential to, you know, a use with a church. Then you, you know, you just start to expand, and therefore, does it fit the character of the neighborhood? And I'm just saying, it's something that is impacting, and it's not necessarily wrong, or anything like that. It's just something to consider.
Well, if, I don't know if anyone else is interested in looking into this more, if everyone's comfortable with what's in place.
I think it's something to consider. I am happy with the SUP if, you know, we can condition it at that point, but I definitely want to be a little more aware of it. But I don't think anything in the, the conditions that we normally look at has to do with size. It's purely of noise and, you know, facilities and...
The use is associated with the facility.
The use. So like I said, it's, you know, never is it a square feet thing, or, or an attendance, you know, how many people they, they see attending, and, and the parking, you know, parking's always been an issue, and things like that. So it's, I don't know, I think it's kind of...
That would be the intensity of the use, which would be a finding with the special use permit.
Possibly through the SUP, we can take care of it all.
There's an SUP finding regarding intensity of use?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah. Unless we have a project to look at, you know, I don't know what else we, we're going to discuss the thing. You have to have a project, because regardless of what we think, unless a project's brought before us, then you make your decisions based upon those findings. That's, that's really kind of the bottom line.
Right, I think this discussion was in response to a project that did come before, and we had some thoughts about the existing zoning, and, you know, what's in place then before it even comes to us, and what we're asking of the applicant, right? If it's something that's so big, that we're going to get the SUP and go no way, then what's the point of even, you know what I mean, putting them through that process in the first place? But if everyone's comfortable with, you know, that we are going to be able to, you know, point developers and, you know, churches and folks in the right direction, you know, with what's in our code now, and the mechanisms that we have for those, and governing that use, then I'm, I'm okay.
Chairman Wiskey, so am I, and I think I'll wait for Vern to come back next year with whatever he might have for revisions, and then we'll talk about specific points. Otherwise, alls we're doing is stabbing in the dark tonight.
Yeah, I do think, it's obvious that staff doesn't want to do anything on this either, that's, maybe it's the legal issue with LUPA, I don't know. So I guess if that's the situation, I'm cool with leaving it alone tonight. Commissioner Wusley, did you have another comment?
I am as well, and I guess, you know, we can exercise our right to condition.
Any other thoughts or comments on that item? Okay, next item, staff announcements.
Let's see, medical marijuana establishment applications for zoning verification letters are coming in. We have received, I believe, 10 to date, and we have a few more that we are expecting in. This state has opened up their application period, which is August 5th through August 18th. So Michelle and I will continue to work on that for the majority of our days through August 18th. West Meadows, that you heard, your last meeting was not appealed, and is going to city council August 27th. Since it was not appealed, we automatically put it to a six o'clock hearing, knowing that there is a large neighborhood interest in that project, so we just put it to six o'clock, just to make sure everybody has a chance to get there. At your last meeting, you had made a recommendation to, to city council for an appointment to Commissioner Taylor, to, to the Regional Planning Commission, because we had mentioned that Commissioner Wusley was termed out, that was incorrect. So we will put that back on for reconsideration in September, because we didn't mean to kick off Commissioner Wusley quite so early. So you'll be seeing that again in September. Yeah, don't miss a meeting, it's your morning. And as I mentioned earlier, we will be starting the Title 18 update. Vern is going to be putting together a schedule, and you will be involved over the next year. We will have a variety of review groups on that. We will be meeting with neighbors, developers, former NAB members, planners on the private side, as well as planning commissioners, and we will be going through the code. If you have any specific issues that you would like us to address, that it's something that's been bugging you for years, please let us know, and we'll pull those up. We, I think we have a good idea of what the big items are, but there might be some issues that you feel don't work and haven't worked. We will go back and look at comments that Planning Commission has brought up in your last few workshops, to make sure that everything's been addressed. We'll be addressing administrative interpretations, and we have a list of outstanding text amendments that need to be addressed as well. So we will keep you posted on that. Vern will be coming back with regular updates to the Planning Commission on that, and please let us know if you have any comments. And that's all I have for tonight.
Hey, thanks. Anybody have any questions for Claudia? Announce, is this, did you cover one through four?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Item 11, Commissioner's Suggestions for Future Agenda Items.
Commissioner Reno, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we have in Title 18 a definition of public facilities, and maybe even discussion, because I think that it's a box that, I mean, we got parks, libraries, schools, exactly how that's defined. I know that PF zoning is for parks, so I just want a definition, because we couldn't find one today, and I think it should be in there.
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll add on to that. The findings for the tentative map are public services. So I guess you're directed to look at that. I would include public services, sort of...
Public facilities and services. Anything?
Right. Public facility and services, yeah. Exactly what, and I guess that's my concern, what that means. As I read this, it doesn't mean schools, but that's, that's my interpretation, and unfortunately, we don't have a definition, so...
Anyone else? Public comment? Anyone left for public comment? Doesn't look like it. And next item adjournment, I'll take a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.